This meeting to order of the Lamonster School Committee. Today is Monday, March 2nd, and we are here at Apple Seeds. If everyone can please stand and salute the flag, which must be outside.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to read our statement. The committee represents the needs of all Lamonster Public Schools students and places their interests above all others. We will exercise leadership, adhere to our protocols, and base our decisions upon a reasoned assessment of all available information. We will advocate for each of our schools and support high-quality public education in Lamonster. Having said that, we're going to open up our public forum tonight. If anybody would like to address the committee, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. If ... please come up.
Evening. My name is Reverend Susan Selhusky-Brown, and my address is 42 Country Lane in Lamonster. And I'm here as part of the Martin Luther King Jr. Coalition with a letter to share with you all and to let you know that we're in partnership with many other groups within the area that are working on trying to come up with more equity, educational equity, diversity, particularly in terms of the organization around multicultural community-based efforts. So we, the undersigned organizations, come together as a multicultural community-based effort to address the critical issues of equity in public schools in North Central Massachusetts. We are requesting a meeting with you, thank you very much, in the hope there will be an opportunity for schools in the community to work together to increase educational equity for all public school students and families, particularly through the development of a more diverse school workforce, additional behavioral health services, and an emphasis on equity within special education. We're excited about the Student Opportunity Act and saddened to hear that it's not going to happen here, but this ... our organizations are working with Gardner, Fitchburg, and Lamonster, so hopefully we can learn something about how that Student Opportunity Act can apply. And we look forward to a more full education equity that increase funding. In light of the April 1st deadline for districts to submit their plans, we're eager to learn more about your priorities, and we do know that one of your priorities is equity in education.
Yes.
We prioritize the following goals, and we're happy to work with you. Increase the number of racially and ethnically diverse people hired by and, more importantly, retained by the education systems at all levels in North Central Mass. Improve the equity in special education and increase behavioral health supports for all students in order to shrink achievement gaps and reduce disparities in the suspension rate. We know that we need to learn more about the whole picture of the challenges and opportunities facing Lamonster School District and the efforts you are already undertaking, and we understand that we have only a part of the picture of the needs and the strengths of the district, and there are many. We also believe that our voices and perspectives are important in the process, and together we bring decades of experience in early, primary, secondary, and higher education, as well as racial equity and systems change work. We also bring deep, diverse connections in the community, and we hope we can work together with Lamonster School District and school districts to bring forward greater equity. The members of this group are Three Pyramids, the North Central Mass Minority Coalition, the North Central Mass Chapter of Showing Up for Racial Justice, Community Health Network of North Central Mass, the United Mung Community of Massachusetts, and the Montezus at King Jr. Coalition. We really do want to be your partners. We really do appreciate all that you're doing. We know that it's hard work to bring in diverse teachers and to tend to the needs, and we know that you're doing the best that you can, and we just want to do better. And we're here to partner with you in whatever ways that would be appropriate. So that's my letter. I'm happy to take any questions that you might have.
So typically in open forum, we're not engaging back and forth. We would have to suspend that if we wanted to have a dialogue, but maybe it's something for us to talk about and ...
I will reach out.
Yeah.
Yes.
Refer to our superintendent to do that.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Do you want to talk?
I would love that.
Sure, that would be awesome.
That would be good.
Who's your secretary?
Christine.
Thank you and good evening.
Great, thank you. We appreciate you coming. Would anybody else like to address the committee at this time? One final last time, would anybody else like to address the committee? With no one coming forward, we're going to close this portion of our meeting, and we're going to move right on to communications. Superintendent, there are no communications this evening?
Okay. How about a superintendent report then?
Oh, great. We've been really busy. Today was Read Across America.
It's also Dr. Seuss's.
And Dr. Seuss's birthday, so we had many community members within our school today, and I was over at Francis Drake, and I read to a kindergarten class, and I read to a third grade class, and when I walked into the hallway, I saw that there were policemen and women, there were firemen and women, there were city officials walking in and out of classes, and just watching the smiles on everyone's face. And I have to give a huge shout-out to every kindergarten teacher out there, bless them, because they just ... they sit on your lap, they sit on your foot, they want your book. But it was a great day, so the turnout has been fabulous, and there will be community readings going on throughout the weeks. So thank you for everyone who participated. Our high school's been extremely busy, and we have a student report tonight, so I don't want to take their thunder, but between the theater company this weekend, outstanding, our sports teams, our hockey, our basketball, it was a crushing loss last night against St. John's, but kudos to everybody who was involved and for the fans coming out and appropriately supporting all of our teams, so thank everyone for that. There's two major events coming up. This Saturday is the Icicle Ball, which sponsors the band and music programs here. We've attended the last three years. It's phenomenal. The music is great. I encourage anyone, if you want tickets, to call the high school to participate. And on March 26th is the LEF, the Annual Gala, which last year supported almost $60,000 in scholarships for our senior class. So come out. We were jam-packed last year. You won't be disappointed. It's a great evening for everyone. So we have this Saturday Icicle Ball, and then March 26th, the LEF, with future events coming.
Can I just put a little plug in? I know on March 30th is going to be a Booster Club fundraiser to support the athletics.
Yes, it's a big kickoff.
It's the first event that they're having as a joint.
Down at Brady's.
At Brady's.
Yep. So if you need more information, that will be going up on the website shortly. And last but not least, I know we think it's spring because it's March 2nd. The weather has been all over the place. It's been up, it's been down, it's been cold, it's been warm. I still try to say to parents, dress in layers, dress appropriately, and if for any reason you think your child is sick or running a fever, please keep them home and seek medical attention. We've ramped up our hand washing and cleaning off surfaces a little bit more diligently, so with everyone's efforts, we want to keep everybody healthy.
Great.
Okay? Thank you.
Good. Thank you very much. With that, we'll do the student report, if you'd like to come forward.
Oh.
And please bring up some more chairs if you need to.
So in an effort to include, as we always do, our entire student body, I have asked our two representatives from our life schools program to come this evening and present, so I really don't have much to do. I practiced the script this afternoon. I'm just here for moral support.
Welcome.
My name is Matthew Katoni.
And I'm Jason Katoni.
And we are twin brothers and seniors at Lamonster High Schools. I'm also old by one minute.
It's very important.
It's very important, yeah.
You can say that.
And also better look. We are here to present all of the activities at OHS and CTE. We got the progress reports last Friday, and are in the middle of term three.
There are MCAS retakes going on this week, and we are doing a practice run for our sophomores to make sure the technology is ready for our next MCAS.
We are preparing for course selection for next year. Discussions are starting soon, and there will be classes, meetings, and presentations.
There will be a three-open house for CTE this Saturday from now till noon.
The Icicle ... The Icicle Ball will be held this Saturday, this is a fundraiser for our music program. It is at the Doubletree Hotel on Saturday.
Our head teacher, Ms. Como, hosts a program with Arabella insurance called Distractology. This interactive program helps teen drivers see the danger of texting and driving.
OHS and CTE host former governor and present national candidate Bill Weld. He toured CTE and met with the students from Student Council stuff and Black Edge Club.
OHS continues to host four Fulbright scholars from the Sudan, Laos, Vietnam, and Argentina. This is a partnership with the U.S. Lowell. Mr. Navalio.
Close enough. We met with him today.
Science department, he has returned from Denver. He spoke at the National Physics Teacher Conference.
Two science teachers, Dylan, Gamaz, and Sherry, they're things are working with the Conqueror Conservation Research. The group was here last weekend interviewing students and teachers.
Winter sports are officially over as we watched St. John's in boys' basketball last night at WPI. Huge crowd and lots of school spirit.
The regional festivals this weekend at OHS, the seven other high schools were here in Lamonster Place first for their rendition of Lord of the Flies, and finally, students Elton Aguchi placed in the top 10 in the state finals in poetry competition. He will be competing in Boston this weekend.
Good job.
Good job.
Very informative. Thank you.
Quick story. I came to see them, and I said, "Do you guys have any plans Monday night?" "No." I said, "Well, the school committee likes two people to come and present," and Jason said, "I like where this is headed."
True, he actually did. He made it worth it.
Well, you're a tough act to follow.
I know.
Do anyone have any questions?
Send me any questions? No, thank you. You were very thorough.
Thank you so much.
Okay, we're going to move on to presentations. We've got the health and wellness presentation. Kathy, if you want to come forward?
I want to introduce my helper, Lisa Mueller. She's a Skyview nurse and also our mentor for most grown high school nurses. So I want to say thank you for having me. I am very happy and honored to be here. I made copies thanks to Ronnie Hull. He said he wanted the papers, so we have them. So health services, our goals, and Lisa, to promote a safe and healthy school environment in order to promote the educational success for all students. And I think that's important because we are open to all students. You never know who is going to walk through the doors, and our job is just to make sure that they can come to school and have the services that they need so that they can participate to their fullest abilities. Next. So, kind of funny thing, you know, school nurses, what do they do? Somebody said it was a great job for retired people, and yeah.
You're a senior now, a schooler.
Exactly. So I put down a list of some of the things that we do. Medication administration, that's a given, first aid, the screenings for the vision, hearing, heights and weights, postural, otherwise known as scoliosis, ASBRT, which is a screen, brief intervention referral to treatment in regards to prevention of substance use, lice, of course, everyone loves a lice screening. We also consult not only with each other, with the teachers, with the parents, but with physicians, with specialists, everything that we can to really try to make sure that the child is on track and able to perform. We monitor for reportable diseases such as measles, mumps, influenza, pertussis, TB, and so many more. We collaborate with staff, parents, physicians, and students. I've been working with the Board of Health on a regular basis, CDC, the state epidemiologists. The school nurses attend IEP meetings, 504 meetings, and IHP meetings, which is Individualized Health Plans, which we have with the parents. We do data collection and documentation, such as your immunizations, asthma reports, diabetes reports. We have monthly reports that get sent to the state, as well as state reports. We do referrals for all those kids who do not do so well in vision and hearing screenings and scoliosis. We have to do a referral process and then follow up on those referrals to see that the parents do bring the kids to the physicians and that we have feedback that, you know, does the child need glasses, that they have a concussion, is the concussion healing, are they able to participate in sports? And of course, we are always, always educating in regards to health issues, illness prevention, and activities of daily living. And you'd be like, you know, what is that? Sometimes we are teaching people how to brush their teeth, how to apply deodorant, and wash themselves. So you never know where kids come from and what's going on, and sometimes we're teaching them basics that you would assume that they would learn at home, but we have to collaborate with the parents to follow up on that. So some of our challenges are that there's only one healthcare professional in the building, with the exception of the high school, and now Skyview. The workload is, you know, a lot that we're following up on. We have students with increasingly complex healthcare needs, physical and mental. Following up with the referrals, as I said, it's not an easy process. The copious amounts of documentation, screenings, and the communications. However, we have so many successes. We get this done. This year has been challenging, but we are getting it done. We have a new vaping prevention program that was initiated, which seems to be working, as well as the changes in the law. Our health website has been improved and updated. We have the mandatory pre-prom meeting for parents. That's next week on March 11th at Lamonster High School in the Cousins Auditorium, and the district attorney will be there. And, you know, the kids seem to be more receptive in regards to the healthier behaviors and the prevention of vaping, marijuana, and drugs, and alcohol, which is nice. We have a new grant. The Central School Health Services Grant ended on June 30th, so now we have the CSHS grant. And this is, it's different, but it's a lot more money in the long run. So some of the changes, it doesn't assist with direct nursing care. Last year it did, in all prior years it did, but this is potentially a 10-year grant. It does assist with our health instructors that are in the middle school, with our nurse care coordinator. It does help out with the electronic health records, nurse education, and non-replaceable supplies. So it's a substantial amount, $125,000 per year, I believe, and we're making use of it. So ...
Good use of it.
Good use of it.
Good use.
Yes. And the health instructors, that was vital. We really needed that. When we lost it, the students really, it was a detriment to the students. They need to have basic knowledge of health. So we're looking forward to this. This is awesome, and it's going to help the population as they graduate and throughout the rest of their lives. We need health education. So, let's see. It also, let's see, so some of the goals on this new grant is that they really want us to have the improved nurse-to-student ratios of, you know, one F to E for every 500 students. And we've been working really hard. We have been making some strides in regards to that, and to the point where, you know, when it comes to medication delegation, it's something that we have to apply for every two years, and they've been declining people that do not have that ratio. So we got it. We're making movement in a positive direction. Other things is with this new grant is to provide case management program in the school setting that addresses the needs of the children with chronic health conditions. Our focus is the homelessness, ELL, and economically disadvantaged, and we do have that. Alicia Weaver is, 0.25 of her hours are in assisting us with case management. They want us to look at, and we have 10 years to come up with the development of a bridge program, and also health education pre-K through 12. That's trauma-informed and resiliency building, and we've been working really hard on that. Jen Mundy actually has been doing considerable amount of work in that, and we hope to continue working together in promoting that more. The other thing is an annual community health needs assessment that addresses the health inequities and its impact of institutional racism and socioeconomic disparities. I looked at that, and I'm like, what? So they are having us, we've always had to report asthma and diabetes and all the illnesses that we have. Now they are asking us to break it down by race and ethnicity, and they are also asking us to try to break it down by socioeconomics. I don't quite know how I'm going to do all that, but we are working on, we've already put into our nursing computer, the race and the ethnicity portion, so we are able to break that down. And our first report to the state in regards to asthma and diabetes has been broken down in that format, which was really quite eye-opening, because you don't think that there's a difference by race and ethnicity. One of the programs that I have to do, I focused on obesity, and we're going to be breaking that down by race and ethnicity as well to see if there is a discrepancy. And of course, required mumping end-of-the-year recording. So why is this important? Because then we can focus our needs on where it's needed most. If we see that there's a huge group that really has more asthma or higher obesity, we can do a focused program with that group and try to figure out how to improve the health issue. So other exciting things for this year, we have, in the beginning of the year, we start off with two new nurses. Colleen Torres is our second nurse at the high school, and she speaks Spanish, which is wonderful. And Melissa Cody is our new nurse at Priest Street. Ann Grogan has retired. We also just recently hired at Skyview Megan Claffey. I don't have Megan's picture up there. And later on Wednesday, actually, Abby Shea will be starting for Samizet. Nurse Susan has retired early, so they will be, she'll be replacing her. I have, last year's end-of-the-year report, I have all the numbers for you. I am not going through all the numbers. I figured that you could look at that on your own and let me know if there's things in particular that you want to ask me about. But most notable in all is that we had a total of 5,272 students that visited the health room out of 6,200 students.
So they are repeat students.
So what we have to do is, one of our reports is how many kids visited the health room at least once, and we can only count the kids once. So out of the 6,200, we saw 5,272. Now, out of them, we had a total of 42,594 health visits that were not medication-related, and an additional 23,815 visits that were medication-related. You go to the next one, so that's like 65,000, and that, there is the stadium for the Patriots, and they hold 65,878 people, so we saw more than what is held by the Patriots stadium.
Quick question. When you talk about you saw that many students, was some of it for kind of those mandatory screenings, or is it opposed to six visits? Do you know what I mean?
No, so this doesn't, it doesn't count the screenings. The screenings are not counted. That's a separate issue. Yes, great question.
You guys are busy.
It is, it is, and it depends on what school that you are at. Some of my schools, such as Priest Street, which is a kindergarten, they might see 10 to 20 kids a day at the most, but schools like Skyview might see 85 kids in a day. So then I wanted to bring it down to the classroom. So what does this mean for the classroom? So if you look at your reports for asthma, if you have 809 students in the district with asthma, that's 13% of the student population, which means you have almost three students that have asthma in a classroom of 20 kids. And I broke it down to 20 because that was an easy number for me to work with. Food allergies, 7.7% of the student population, so you have one and a half kids in each classroom that has a life-threatening food allergy. ADHD, you have two kids in the classroom on average with ADHD. Anxiety, you have one kid per classroom on average with anxiety. And how does this affect the classroom when you have a teacher that has, and these could be the same kids, it could be different kids, the asthma, the life-threatening allergies, the ADHD, and the anxiety. And our job is to help make it work. So for the asthmatics, not only are we working with them in regards to recognizing their ability to breathe, or, you know, if they're symptomatic of the asthma, and to get treatment and use their inhaler correctly, and maybe use it before recess, before gym, but we're also teaching the teacher how to assist them with the inhaler for field trips. Food allergies, if the teacher's doing a program, say, in the Food allergies, if the teacher is doing a program, say, in the fall, for making applesauce, the school nurse has to go through and see, is the child, are any of those kids in that classroom allergic to apples, or cinnamon, or any product that goes into making that? And if so, what can we do to modify this so that all kids can participate? Because we really want everyone to be able to participate in the activity. And in regards to the ADHD, not only is it medication, possibly, maybe not, but working on a behavior plan with the teachers and the families, and trying to figure out ways to make it work. So, there's, you know, a lot more than the diagnosis. So, after this, I'm skipping over to school wellness and health. Any questions before I go on to the, to that? No? Okay. So, it's comprised of school committee, nurses, physical educators, health educators, guidance counselors. We have some principals. The school physician is a member. We get together, we are working on wellness policy, protocols, policies, related policies, and we're really trying to promote health within the school district. Our focus this year is more back onto the basics of the obesity prevention, but also trying to increase the student and staff understanding of health and wellness, and trying to find ways to increase parent awareness, as well as staff and district awareness and wellness. And this year, we decided to go one step further, and I sent out a survey to the principals and the assistant principals, and to get a feedback of their knowledge of the wellness policy, because we have had a lot of change. And as a result, we came up with the schools making their own goals in regards to how they can improve on wellness. It comes, it works much better when the school, when each school finds out where they need to improve on. And so, some of the examples that they came up with was integrating a box program in the classroom, providing nutrition education for students, having food demonstrations and tests and tastings, improving the health office website, fundraising, meaning, how can we fundraise in a better, more responsible way? Vending machines, trying to make sure that they are turned off during the school day unless it is water. Working on vaping, vaping prevention, and, you know, we have two more meetings, so they came up with their goals at the last meeting, and what they were, and I'm eager to see how things are coming along at our next meeting, which should be towards the end of March. And really, that's about all that I have. I was looking for words in regards to school nursing, and I came up with this quote from a school nurse in Texas named Sherry Nishbach, and I really liked it. It resonated with me. I always thought, school nursing, that would be so easy, but that was a huge awakening, because there are so many kids there. There are so many things that you deal with. You would think that, whole misconception, like it's belly aches and Band-Aids. It's the opposite, because you're keeping up with everybody's immunizations. You're doing hearing and vision screenings, and then there are the kids who can't afford glasses, and you go above and beyond and try to help those families get those kids glasses. It's the same thing with the dental stuff. They don't have insurance, they don't have CHIP or Medicaid, so then it becomes individualized. You're dealing with kids with life-threatening allergies and diabetes and seizures. This is not what people think it is. We do treat belly aches and give out Band-Aids, but there's so much more to the scope of it that I never realized. Let me say, if the healthcare professionals can't realize it, it's really hard for us to have the public realize what we do. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, and all the nurses for eating. Yes. Do we have any questions, or anything?
Yes, go ahead, Michael.
Initially, at the end of your report, a couple things stood out to me. I noticed the alliance, referrals, followed by completed referrals.
Yes.
And a really big difference in the numbers. Can you talk about that?
Yes. So, that takes an awful lot of our work. So, we send out the referrals, say, for vision, and we send the letters home saying, your child didn't do well in the vision screening, they can't see. Can you please, you know, take them to the eye doctor and, you know, send us back the referral? And sometimes we're sending two, three, four, five letters, and sometimes year after year, we're sending letters. It's the same statewide, nationwide. Sometimes the kids walk in with glasses, so we know that they were seen, they just didn't return the referral. But it's, it's tough. And then again, you have to look at the barriers to the parents.
Right.
If they're working all the time, if they're doing CHIP work, it's really hard to get the kids to the doctors. But we try, and we work with other agencies, like the Alliance Club and other groups, in regards to trying to help decrease the barriers.
My second question is sort of a general thing. We've got numbers about 19, and I know you gave us similar numbers last year, but I don't remember them. Are there any places that significantly changed, or is everything about the same, or higher or lower than last year?
Yeah. Things are pretty similar. The only thing that's higher is if you look at the BMI, the biggest BMI in the world, right? And I have the national trends. So, our VMIs in regards to the overweight, obese, those numbers do continue to go up. At the Wellness Committee meeting, I did show a 10-year trend, and it showed that we have increased. And if you compare our obesity rates with the national rates, for grade one, we are higher. We're 22, 0.11 for males, 20, 0.81 for females.
Those are percents?
And national rate is 17.9.
Those are percents?
Those are percentages, correct. Correct. So, grades one and four, the national rate is 17.9. We are considerably higher. And then our seventh and 10th graders nationally, it's 20.6%, and once again, we are higher. We're trying.
What are the percentiles based on? I mean, 95th percentile and up should be 5%. So, how is it nationally 17.9? Is this based on some standard rather than what's actually out there?
So, so, these are growth percentiles. So, when you're taking the height and weight, the BMI growth percentiles. So, the 5 to 85th percentile is what's considered to be normal. Things that are below the fifth percentile, they're considered to be underweight.
Yep.
And that might just be the way that they were built, and it might be that they are malnourished, or that there's some illness going on. The 85 to 95th percentile means that they are overweight, but it doesn't necessarily always mean that they are overweight or obese. This is a screening tool. If kids are athletic, they will have, be bulkier, have higher muscle mass, and on this, they will appear to be obese when in fact they're not, they're physically fit.
Does anybody else have another question?
I'm sorry. So, I guess, just because, you know, as coronavirus is all over the news, I know there isn't a full-fledged plan yet for communication, and hoping it never is an issue, but while we're working with kids who may have compromised medical systems in our school, is there a way to communicate to families who might be at greater risk when there's things like strep going around school, or, you know, the flu B, which those types of things are more likely to be impacting our kids than what is hopefully not coming towards?
Yeah. So, many times, and general communications are usually more in regards to illness prevention. I did add this poster, which all the nurses have received, and the administrators, and I have an English and Spanish, because that's what the CDC does. I'm looking for Portuguese. But, the most important thing is to avoid the close contact with those who are sick. To wash your hands frequently, four, 20 seconds at a time. I tell the kids to see the ABCs twice. To avoid touching their face and nose, because that's how we inoculate ourselves. To stay home when you're sick, and that is for staff and students. If you're sick, please stay home, do not share it. And of course, the cough and sneezes in their elbow or with a tissue. If they use a tissue, they got to wash their hands. And, once again, the kids are usually pretty good. Prevention is number one. We don't, so, we follow the guidelines of the Department of Public Health Epidemiologist. Normally, we don't send out giant letters saying, we have strep going around, unless there's a certain percentage in a class, and then that class will be notified, because it tends to cause panic. I'd be sent, we'd be sending letters out about strep, lice, you know, every single day, and it's not necessarily, and, it doesn't mean that your child is going to get it if it's one kiddo. And so, it's more that we work on the prevention and really teach people how to protect themselves. But we do have a plan in regards to Corona, so there is a plan in place. The nurses are fully aware. I've been sending them the Department of Public Health and CDC notifications, as well as to our superintendent. And, you know, right now, what we are seeing is influenza, but we are aware, we are keeping our eyes open, and we are looking, you know, you have to at least be aware.
Thank you. Great, thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to our budget update. Is that you, Michael?
I think that's you.
That's me. Actually, it's us together. It's very brief. We are just about ready to present our budget to the finance committee. Michael and I were discussing after our finance earlier that we would like to have a meeting next week prior to the next school committee meeting. We were feeling that we do want some other voices in the room to help formulate some thinking, you know, so like you said today, we really have to look at what we have control over and what we don't have control over. So, we are very close to finishing that up. By Thursday, we should have a nice rough estimate, and if Michael can schedule a meeting for next week, I think it would be very helpful. Great.
So, I'll be talking to my committee members about when you're available, and we'll set up a meeting.
I appreciate that. Okay, any questions? So, sort of piggybacking on that, we asked Peter to write a letter, and you did provide us with a draft letter, and I would imagine that everybody's had a chance to review it. Does anybody have any comments, or suggestions, or thoughts pertaining to the letter?
No, I think you did a great job.
Yeah, no, I did too.
So, is he too nice to the government? He's being polite, so.
Right.
I've supported the letter.
Yeah, me too. Get more flies with honey. Right. Absolutely. So, thank you very much for undertaking that, and you did a nice job, and I think at this point, we're ready to then send it out on behalf of the school committee. So, if we can have each person just sign that letter? Yep. Okay. Yes, so, do, who has it? Peter, do you have it?
Oh, I have it from the packet, yeah.
That's fine.
Yeah, that's fine. It's on the header.
Great. So, moving on to the superintendent mid-year review. This is great. So, there were a few complaints that the packet was very thick this week, and I'm sorry about the tree, but if you saw the actual evidence, it's an entire file drawer. So, there are just selections here, and if anyone would like further information or something to review, please let me know. But each year, an evaluation is conducted on the superintendent's goals and their completion. As we are a little more than halfway through this year, it's typical to present a mid-year, what I call a check-in. This opportunity allows not only for the progress monitoring, but possible correction or redirection if gains are not evident. In your packet are my goals. There are three SMART goals, and that's the acronym, which means the goals have got to be very tight. They have to be specific, they need to be measurable, attainable, rigorous, yet realistic, and they have to be timely. And for me, that's a school year, so 180 days in which to accomplish it. These goals are aligned to the instructional core and fall under three domains. One of personal practice or passion, student learning, and district improvement plan. There are also indicators regarding the four standards of leadership practice that need to be evaluated as well. Through a process of self-reflection, strategic planning, and a deep data dive, I identified key areas of focus which would likely impact multiple areas and all students. Currently, I have almost completed my professional practice goal of successfully engaging in year two of the new superintendent induction program, with only one content day left in March that will round out this year, and all my research and projects have been submitted and accepted. I currently still access my coach. I am allowed up to six hours a month, and we're doing anywhere up to 16 hours a month. He is very resourceful, and I appreciate his time. You see him here. He comes to school committee meetings, he goes to principal meetings. My student learning goal of improving student writing in the area of topic development has been well addressed. Students in grades K through eight interacted with fall and winter universal writing prompts. Staff teams corrected and evaluated responses by using the MCAS rubrics. Further analysis of those responses have either informed instructional moves, identified trends, and/or provided a need for additional professional development in this area. The student gains have been remarkable, as displayed on one of the data artifacts in your packet. It is also noted that we have one grade that seems to either have flatlined, they're stuck, and we are moving to address what may be the remedy. Lastly, the district improvement goal ties to our mission for providing for every child in our district. Level fours, M5, ELL, and Fells, those are our former L students, are receiving direct attention in the area of mathematics. Staff have been using local, district, and state data to build each individualized student improvement plan to help identify what best practices will advance their mathematic MCAS scores. As far as the standards for professionalism, you'll see that the artifacts provided are such as their agendas, administrative trainings, data, schedules, and communication pieces which speak directly to fulfilling all major responsibilities. As the educational leader, I'm constantly in pursuit of enhancing our network and massaging the belief of being lifelong learners as we grow our own professional teams. Within your packet, you will see artifacts of assessment results, student pieces of work. You have to look at the kindergarten written piece. That was in January. Five years old, doing that, right? We have progress monitoring reports, communications, on and on. These directly link to an action, or a goal, or an outcome. We know we have made significant progress at this time, based on the data, and should meet our targets, but ultimately, I would like to exceed expectation and promote the excellent work of the teams coordinating these efforts and support of all of our students. And at any time, I welcome feedback, or if there's another piece of evidence you would like to see, it's plentiful. So, we try to cover a gamut, you know? There's a progress report in there, there could be an assessment data in there, but right now, all points to a positive outcome. Excellent. This is very comprehensive. Thank you. So, does anybody have any questions or anything for the superintendent at this time? So, this is all information for those new members that we will be utilizing for your end-of-the-year evaluation. So, this gives us a good check-in point, what's happened really in the first half of the year, and I know the new members, you haven't obviously been on the committee at that point in time, but, you know, certainly going forward, hopefully it'll make a little more sense. And we have a specific form that we'll be disseminating, and everyone will take part. Isabel, Sue and I are on the evaluation committee at this point in time.
And Sue and Ronnie attended a full-length training on this.
Yes.
Because there are two different sets of ratings. For the SMART goals, they have their own rating system, and then the professional practices have their rating system, and there has to be a merge somewhere in the end.
I think, you know, Sue and I have been on the committee for 20-plus years, and I think we've had
and I think we've had 20-plus different evaluations.
Forms, interpretations.
Interpretations and forms and everything, so it's continually evolving. So we'll have some more clarification. I know Ron hoped to disseminate some of the information from the conference or training, so we'll continue to follow up on that.
Thank you. And huge kudos to this team for getting the work done. They're doing a very nice job out there. We're a limited crew, but we're working hard. Thank you, everyone, we appreciate it. Any questions? Ron, then Mike?
Is there any particular area in here that you are interested in feedback? I mean, I'm reading all through it, but...
I get feedback every day from my team. So if there's something that you're particularly interested in, we have made sure this year that this alignment with administrative goals, with teacher goals, with the strategic plan, we've kept it very tight. And it's, we seem to be making strides.
Thank you.
All right, Ron?
Tracy was there, and Tracy said that either you or Paula has to send a request to have her come here to go over the superintendent evaluate because we've got three new people on just to...
Yes, I think when we get to new business, we'll talk about training and things like that.
I did send an email to one a couple months ago.
Did you? Okay, yeah, because we had talked about that last year that we needed to bring someone out. This year, once the new posts came on board. But yes, we definitely need some, maybe just roles and responsibilities as well as the evaluation, just sort of refresher and introductory for everyone. So that'd be great, thank you. All right, thank you very much, superintendent. At this point, we're going to move on to the approval of the minutes for February 3rd, 2020. Isabel, or no, no. Ron, can you please, sorry. So you started, Ron.
I can do it if you want me to.
Would you like to make a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes. Just didn't want to say it, and now I can't remember what.
February 3rd.
February 2020.
February, February 5th, 2020.
3rd.
I wasn't, I didn't find, I was looking for the page, and I knew it was February 3rd, 2020. Okay.
Can I have a second, please?
A second.
Isabel, thanks. Any comments, omissions, errors? All right, all...
You always find something, Michael.
Perfect, do you?
Nope, tonight.
No? A gold star. So all those in favor? Opposed, motion carries, thank you. And we're going to go to subcommittee reports. Mike, finance.
Finance, we discussed use of Kendall Funds for Tobias' stage for use for graduation as well as other events. The Class of 2020 has generously donated about 60% of the cost. So we voted to approve that use.
In the past, we were renting.
Yes, we've been renting the stage at about $2,000 a year. We have a quote, we're getting a 30% off sale. So we have a quote for a total cost of $15,950.48 to own a stage, which we had a nice description of how wonderful it is. The Class of 2020 has contributed $9,072.63 for that, leaving $6,877.85 that can come from the Kendall Fund. We also discussed the need for an access ramp for it to make it accessible. And we pre-approved up to $2,000 for that because that was not part of the original proposal, but it seemed like a good thing to have.
Yes. And thank you to the Class of 2020.
Yes, thank you.
Very generous.
Very generous.
We also talked a little bit about the...
Glenn wanted to just introduce, 2019. Oh, I'm sorry, 2019.
So this is a typo in the letter because it says 2020 on the letter.
So thank you, Class of 2019. And Class of 2020, you big shoes to fill.
Just, we also reviewed where we are. Health insurance expenses are killing us, they're much, much higher than anticipated.
And is that because the rate came in much higher?
So it's a combination thing. We, the city told us to budget a 6% increase, which we did. By the time June came around and the budget hearing was happening, we already knew it would be 7%. So we did in our revised budget do 7%. So the extra percent came out of the $960,000 additional Chapter 70 dollars we got. But it's been much higher than that. We're not quite sure how much of that is, they're investigating. It's people, it's more retiree health insurance, that's gone up significantly. Maybe people, more people are opting to take our health insurance instead of something else, but it's much higher, so. I think we're going to need a supplemental appropriation to pay the fourth quarter bill on that.
Keep us updated.
Yep. We also briefly looked at the state of the foundation budget, which we talked about in the last meeting. I've learned since then, I complained about not counting the low-income students. The Student Opportunity Act actually gives the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education a year to figure out how to count them. So what they did this year, well, I think it hurts us, was not out of keeping with the bill. However, the failure to fund the economically disadvantaged low-income rate properly is really why we're getting $69,000 instead of the close to a million that they told us we would get. The legislature can still fix that. I was there today for Higher Ed Advocacy Day, which is why I'm wearing this, because they're working on trying to pass the Cherish Act to help the higher ed side. Doesn't do us much good to prepare our students to go to college if they can't afford it once they get there. But I also took some time while I was there to say we need to fund the bill that we've already passed. So I don't know, hopefully the legislature will do better, and we will be in better shape for next year. But we, of course, have to budget according to what the governors propose because that's the only number we have in front of us now.
Thank you for your advocacy while you were there. Anybody else have any comments or thoughts? All right. Ron, policy? Anything?
Yeah, we approved the first reading of revised policies. And the policies are J-E-A, J-H, compulsory attendance ages. And you'll look at all the alphabetical letters. It's a combination, there's compulsory, there's admission of resident students.
Why don't you just read off what the letters are?
Well, I was going to do that, but the last time I did that, I was held up to ridicule in public, and so I'm not going to read the letters.
Okay.
If you remember the last meeting. That's why I'm reading them off this way.
I don't remember any ridicule, but...
Well, I was told it was like, you know, looking like the Three Stooges. And so I'm not part of the Three Stooges.
I think there was a request, just so the public knows what we're talking about.
Right.
Instead of just saying J-E-A, J-H.
That's why I was...
You wanted to enter that one, say what the topic is.
That's what I was doing.
Okay, go ahead, I was just...
Okay.
Okay.
All right. So the first one, the second one, school entrance age, admission of resident students, the school choice, student absence and excuses. You'll see the file numbers in the paper. Student rights and responsibilities, conduct. People are all sticking together, which makes me look a little silly. Student dress code, care of school property by students, participation in activities after absence or during, bullying, prohibition against bullying and retaliation. Definitions are on, go ahead. Well, that's one of the areas, isn't it?
Subordination and use of profanity is the next one?
Yeah, training and professional development. There's definitions of all these cyberbullying.
Great, but that's our one policy.
And access to resources and services, insubordination and/or use of profanity, student palpitations, hazing, drug and alcohol policy, teaching intervention alcohol, tobacco, and drugs, weapons in school, sexual harassment policies, gambling, cheating, student search, pregnant students, and theft.
Do I have a second? Isabel, I mean, Isabel, Melissa. Isabel, can I read up there?
I'm ready.
So, so we have first and second, any comments? All right, all those in favor, motion carries. Thank you, Ron. We have action items, the approval of the field trip. We have at the high school, the student council is going to Hyannis for their overnight trip this week, so we need your approval. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second, excellent, all those in favor? Opposed, motion obviously carries, thank you very much. Vote on the fiscal year 2021 calendar. A lot of work went into this, and I want to thank the teachers' union for upping the first date for teachers. They voted, they brought to our attention that Labor Day was so late this year that the start would be awful. So they took a vote, and they are allowing us to start earlier than need be on August 26th. So we're very pleased with their work. Excellent. Can I have a motion? Second? Excellent, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carries. And then as far as action items, we've already did the approval of the policies. So we're going to move into new and old business. Go ahead, Isabel.
I have some old-ish slash new-ish business. On Saturday, I spent the day with the Luminary School Theater Company in their production of Lord of the Flies during their festival show. And they, as the students said in their presentation, they placed first out of the seven schools that were here, and they're on to Sharon High School in two weeks. But I want to give a shout out to Andrea Mastriani and Tim Smith for their great work with those students. But I also want to give a shout out to all of the students who won some awards on Saturday evening. So for the role of Jack, Marilyn Wilson won an excellence for acting. And for the role of Piggy, Anya Saban won an award for excellence in acting. And for excellence in stage management, Emily Dotson won an award for excellence in tech direction, set design, and special effects, went to Caitlin Wright. For excellence in costume design and execution, went to Sarah DiAmicus, Emily Valeri, Kyle Peralta. For excellence in prop design and execution, went to Sarah Pollock, Gavin Robillard, Chelsea Sarfo, and Ethan Vitesse. And for Blood Crew, I will say that again, Blood Crew, because it's intense, went to Mia Mahoney, Aaron Santana, and Emily Ute. And so they have performances this Tuesday and Thursday at 7:00 PM. It was excellent, I encourage everyone to go if they can. And I wish them the best of luck when they go to Sharon High School. I really think they're going to end up going to the John Hancock Theater, and we will have to approve that, so.
Nice, well, we have lots of very talented...
It was excellent.
People, so the students are wonderful. All right, thank you. Anybody else, I have a couple of things, but I didn't know.
If I could, I just wanted to read the letter one more.
Sure.
I did want to make a motion about it, if I can do so. I wanted to make, because obviously just having the letter itself doesn't mean much if we don't do something with it. So I wanted to make a motion to send a copy to the Senate President Karen Spilka, the Senate Ways and Means Chair Michael Rodriguez, and our own State Senator Dean Tran, and also a copy to the House Speaker Robert DeLeo, the House Ways and Means Chair Aaron Michlitz, if I pronounced it correctly, Michlitz, and our own State Representative Natalie Higgins. Just to, you know, actually give some legs to our statement.
I'll second that.
Can I add that we sent a copy to the head of the GSC?
Yeah.
Can I, can I, you know, all the names you listed, but there's one name you didn't?
And who's that?
Charlie Baker, put it on his desk. Put it in big print. I mean it, you can laugh, you're on, I'm dead serious. Because he's the only one that counts. All those others, they all, but he's the one that has to listen, he's the one that has to read that.
See, I would also add the governor and the GSC. I didn't, yes, thank you.
Do we need a motion to do that? So I don't think we really need a motion, but we should...
Did you say, okay?
Yeah, but we should, so Chris is going...
That way it sticks, so that way they'll see that we want it sent on Charlie's desk.
Right, I think we're all in agreement. So we do have a motion and a second, it's not something we typically have to make a motion, but since we did, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carries, and Chris will make sure that it gets to all those folks.
It's right here.
Yeah, so we'll just get it back to Chris.
I'll bring it to you out.
Oh, is Chris doing it, or is Peter doing it?
Well, Chris usually...
I kind of thought you were doing it.
Usually, I thought Chris sends out our stuff, but if you...
He wrote a draft, or we signed it up and Chris sent it out.
Yes.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I think it should come from Chris.
It will come from Chris.
Thanks, Peter.
So thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you for doing that.
Excellent, we appreciate it. So I know one of the things that we briefly touched on is having MASC come in and do a training. So once we sort of get back, hear back from them, we'll throw out a few dates. Typically, when we have these trainings, we usually try to do it on a weekend for a couple hours because during the week, it's usually a little too chaotic and hectic. So when we get a little bit more information, Chris will send out some dates for all of us to weigh in on. My other thought...
I have one comment on that.
Sure.
I know our field rep is Kathleen Kelly. I spoke with her last Thursday, because I attended a MASC special at subcommittee meeting. And I told her that we would be in touch with her, and she's willing to come out and talk to us. Glenn did not attend that meeting, so... But Kathleen is going to be, she is our field rep, so she would be when that happened and come out.
Good. Thank you, Sue, for following up on that as well. The other thing that I wanted to bring up, and Brandon's not here tonight, is he had secured a booth at the Johnny Appleseed Festival. That's something that in general, we need to, just anything like that. If it's something as a committee, it needs to really be a committee decision. And we need to have sort of a clear, sort of focus of what the purpose would be. And we have to be careful that we don't have a quorum. So that, I don't think, you know, folks necessarily think about that. But that's something that I'd like to bring up next time because I want him to be participating. But just in general, for roles and responsibilities, you can't sort of advocate on behalf of the committee unless it's the committee's will. And just to be, you know, think about that first because it's, I think, really easy to say, oh, let's go do this. But it's something that we just need to have a conversation about. So it doesn't mean we won't do it, it just means that we need to maybe put it on our next agenda so that we can figure out, you know, the purpose and, you know, what makes sense for who can go and all those kinds of things, so. Anything else that people want to bring up? Okay, having nothing else, do we have a motion to adjourn? All right, Mike made it, who wants to second it?
I'll second.
Okay, lots of people. All right, yeah. Thank you, everyone.